Let's turn to Siobhan Foster for an update as to where we are on this matter, which has been heard by the council on several prior recent occasions. And that fact, the extent to which this matter has been aired before this council in recent times, will be a factor in our determination of the time allocated to each person who wishes to speak. We have some 50 cards of persons who wish to speak. We'll try to accommodate everyone who continues to have that wish as we go through the public testimony. Ms. Foster, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor Bogard. Honorable members of the city council, I have a brief presentation this evening, and then we have representatives from Pasadena Humane Society here as well. There are four recommendations before the city council this evening. The first is to receive canvassing data reported by the Humane Society and other supplemental information. Secondly, to establish a fee differential such that a dog license for an unaltered dog is $60 more than for a spayed or neutered dog. Third, to conduct the first reading of the mandatory spay-neuter ordinance for dogs and cats over six months of age. And fourth, to direct Public Works and the Humane Society to provide an update on the ordinance one year from implementation. In terms of the canvassing data reported by Pasadena Humane Society, year one of the program ran from July 1st, 2013, to September 3rd, 2014, and it involved two Humane Society staff members canvassing the city three days per week, which resulted in the issuance of 11,272 dog licenses. Thirty-five percent of the licenses issued were new, and 65% were renewals. Year two of the program is now underway. The proposed ordinance would make mandatory spay and neuter of all dogs and cats over six months of age with certain exemptions. The exemptions are dogs that are unable to be spayed or neutered without likelihood of suffering bodily harm or death due to age and infirmity, dogs used by law enforcement agencies, service or assistance dogs, and those dogs that are registered, dogs or cats, excuse me, that are registered for show, competition, and breeding purposes. In terms of enforcement, enforcement would be handled via secondary enforcement beginning July 1st, 2015. This means that when a violation of an existing local or state law occurs, the ordinance can be enforced. Two typical examples of violations are allowing a dog to run loose without a leash, or failure to license a dog over four months of age. PHS will check status of dogs and cats they come into contact with during the regular course of its work, and dogs and cats entering the shelter and return to Pasadena residence would have to be sterilized or acquire an exemption from a veterinarian upon release. When an unlicensed dog is identified and is not spayed or neutered, an owner will have the opportunity to buy a one-time, unaltered dog license and have one year to alter the dog or receive an exemption from a veterinarian. This grace period is going to, is proposed to run for three years and expire on June 30th, 2018, at which time dog and cat owners will need to be in compliance with the ordinance. In terms of a fee differential, dog license fees with a cost differential for unaltered dogs is the industry model. The $60 proposed differential is in line with other jurisdictions. Exhibit one to the agenda report shows that there is a $55 average differential based on a survey of 34 other jurisdictions. The effective date of the differential would be July 1st, 2015, as proposed. This would allow time for public outreach and residents the opportunity to license dogs and spay and neuter cats and dogs as the deadline approaches. In terms of public outreach, public outreach will be coordinated by the public information officers of the city and the Humane Society. Initial outreach will focus on the upcoming spay and neuter requirements for dogs and cats, low-cap-cost spay and neuter options, and ordinance enforcement beginning July 1st, 2015. Methods will include traditional newsletters such as Pasadena in Focus, media releases, website, social media, educational outreach in schools, and canvassing, and the canvassing program, as well as collaboration with animal-based nonprofit organizations. That concludes my presentation, and again, the Humane Society is available if you would like brief comments from them.
Siobhan, I had the impression that maybe the Humane Society expected to offer some further comments on the canvassing effort that was, that you reported.
Yes, Mayor, they're prepared to do so. Stephen, Elizabeth are here.
Please, I guess unless there's increasing interest from the council, it need not be a long report, but...
No, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Richard Campo. I'm Senior Vice President at Pasadena Humane Society and SPCA. Our canvassing effort was very successful. We were able to bring in the data from the city of Pasadena, bring it into our database, and kind of clean up the data and go through and expand, and you can see that it was a great success, and we believe in our second year, we will continue to have success with that. And we wanted to thank the Department of Public Works for their effort in putting together these recommendations representing the animals of Pasadena. We did want to point out a few notes that you might hear from people who are not pro mandatory spay and neuter. Some of the arguments are in regards to early neuter. At six months of age, that's considered an adolescent neuter. Oftentimes, animals are already into sexual maturity at six months of age. If the person's veterinarian feels that that is inappropriate at that time, they can write an exemption for that person, and they can get an unaltered license for that year after this grace period is over, and then the next year, we can have the conversation again about spaying and neutering their animal. As for enforcement, we are looking at secondary enforcement. We will not be knocking on people's doors and looking for people who are breaking these. It's as we find people who are, come to our attention through not following other laws that are set for animals. For education, we have had education programs, and we're expanding our education programs. We've had them since the 1970s. This would give us an assistance in our education program. It would give us attention to the issue of pet overpopulation, and that's something that it would give us a little more teeth to our arguments when we're talking to people. When it comes to economics, and this is a really hard one, we want, we want this ordinance to apply equally to people. We want to offer assistance to people who cannot afford low cost or any spay and neuter. So what we have available at the Humane Society for all pit bulls and chihuahuas, those sterilization surgeries are free, they're subsidized by the Humane Society. We offer for other dogs, our highest, our average is $125 for dogs, and I'm looking at right now, $50 for cats for spays and neuters. So that's an average, and then we offer other subsidies. The other thing that we will be doing is we will be working with the outreach of other nonprofits to bring them into the city of Pasadena to offer low-cost and fully subsidized spays and neuters. We feel that an ordinance like this will be kind of a call to arms for them to come in and join us in the city of Pasadena and assist people with low-cost and no-cost spays and neuters. Thank you.
(applause) I'm interested in the, this is the last part of, I just want to be sure I understand. So you're saying that the average for dogs, spay and neuter is $125?
Pasadena Humane Society, yes.
Yeah, and what does that mean, the average? Depends on dog size, or?
It depends on dog size. For example, a small male dog would be $95, and that's zero to 40 pounds. So that's most of the dog population, falls within there. And then from 41 to 100 pounds, we're looking at $125. And then for those people with the extra-large dogs, it's a bit more, it's at $150. There are not a lot of people with extra-large dogs. This is 100 pounds plus.
Then the, so when you say there are other subsidies, you would anticipate there would be a call to arms, others, what is, what kind of organizations are you talking about?
In the past, there have been other groups that have come into Pasadena with a spay-neuter mobile, where they come in with a mobile surgery, and oftentimes, they will go into a park and set up and have surgeries in the park, and residents can bring in their animals in the morning, and then in the afternoon, pick up their animals after surgery.
But in terms of this ordinance, where presumably there would be a sort of a surge if we were successful in terms of stimulating people to have their, to be compliant, do you contemplate that the fee schedule will be a deterrent for some people, or, I mean, the Humane Society can't afford to provide free service for every, for all, everyone who wants it presumably, right?
Well, currently, we do offer free for all pit bulls and chihuahuas.
Yeah, I got that.
And we can work with creating more subsidies for people based on a need base, and then we would be calling in other agencies who do free and fully subsidized spays and neuters.
But I just want to be clear, so if I, if I bring my dog in and I say that I can't afford it, I got an average dog, $125 dog, say, or a big dog, what is your response to me?
My response to you is, at this moment, we would probably work with you to get you a voucher for one of these fully subsidized programs, if it's not a pit bull or chihuahua. And as we move forward and we look into next year going towards July 1st, we also are looking into adding more subsidies through the Humane Society on a need base.
Okay, and when you say need base, you, you do qualification for need? You have an application form that?
That would be something that we would be putting together based on the outcome.
Okay, thanks.
My question is related to that. When we had this before us in the past, there was some suggestion made that the $60 charge for an unaltered dog might be in part set aside to fund the animals of lower-income families. Is that contemplated?
That is something that we've, we have discussed with the city and something that we, we are contemplating, setting that aside as a subsidy.
If I may, Mayor, Steve McNaul, President and CEO, Pasadena Humane Society. Yes, we have discussed that, but we would not, we would actually split those funds with the city at, at that point in time. But also, I think the bottom line, let me back up just a little bit. You know, we've been, we've been working with animals for, you know, 111 years at our shelter, and we see, we see time and time again the unwanted animals coming in. And we now have the opportunity to really step up to the plate and really get a handle on the pet overpopulation problem in our community and other communities by a mandatory spay-neuter program. It's going to do nothing but save thousands upon thousands of lives of unborn animals in the near future. And I have to tell you, it is just, again, as Elizabeth mentioned, kudos to, you know, Public Works for spearheading this, this ordinance, and there's nothing but positive that's going to come out of this. The money, yes, the charges, the fees that we charge at Pasadena Humane Society are very, very cheap. Your typical veterinarian in the city, depending on, say, 100-pound dog, 80 to 100-pound dog, is going to charge anywhere from $350 to $550 for that spay of that animal. Our fees are such, they're adjusted to where we're, we're not making any money on it, that's for sure. And we can't offer it free to the public at large. However, we can create, get creative with some programs, voucher programs and such, that maybe we can really help. But it's an issue of, if it's an issue of cost, we have, we do have citizens that come in and say, you know, "I really want to have my cat sterilized, but I can't afford it, I'm homeless." We have various funds set up to where maybe we can help those people.
Just two clarification questions. What would be the response if either a resident or a visitor, their dog ends up in the shelter some kind of way, and they want to pick up their dog, it's unaltered, they do not want to get the dog altered? What is the next step?
Were you saying a resident or a visitor? I wasn't clear.
Either or, visitor, visitor, both. The dog came from Arcadia somewhere.
Yeah, if it was a visitor, then the ordinance is for the city that they live in would apply. So if, for example, the dog came from Arcadia, we would encourage them to spay or neuter their animal upon release. They would have to pay the fine that's required by the state of California, which is a $50 fine for having an unaltered dog that was roaming. So of course, we would talk to them about that and talk about how it would be less expensive to go for a spay, because for strays, we have a, when people are picking up their strays from the shelter, we offer, offer an even further reduced rate for spay and neuter to make it more attractive.
What if it's a resident?
If it's a resident of Pasadena, we will ask them to, I mean, at this point in the law, if it's during a three-year grace period, then they will be offered the license with the one-year grace period to go ahead and license their dog and schedule an appointment with their veterinarian, and we will follow up with them later.
Licenses yet, but as far as the on-the-spot spay-neuter, so to speak, they do not have to get their dog spayed to retrieve him or her out of the shelter?
Yeah, in the grace period, that would be correct.
What about after the grace period?
After the grace period, they would have to have their animal sterilized before returning.
What if they don't want that? Are we keeping, are we saying after the grace period is over, we're, we're keeping dogs or cats, or whatever the animal is? Or are we just strongly, continuing to strongly?
We will strongly encourage it. We want the dogs back in their homes, we want the cats back in their homes. I mean, that's our ultimate goal, and we will, we will work with the people if they want to go to their own veterinarians rather than using our services at the Humane Society. Other Humane Societies have set up things that we would do as well, where we would transport the animal to their private veterinarian, and they can take their animal to their own veterinarian if they don't feel comfortable having it with us, and so we can offer those kinds of exemptions after the grace period.
Thank you.
I was heartened by your discussion on Prop 47. It was a discussion of reasonableness and moderation and appropriateness. And there are lots of similarities between that type of issue and this with neutering. As the proposal is written, it is one of extremes. It grew out of Mr. Madison's fears. There are better ways to address this problem, to treat responsible owners appropriately and not to punish them in deference to the few irresponsible owners. It would have been better, rather than going in the riverside direction, to go with a model like Calgary, which has breed-neutral laws that are enforceable, that address issues of irresponsible ownership without punishing responsible owners, that has community bite protection programs, laws that focus on irresponsible and dangerous behavior of individual owners and their dogs, dangerous dog laws that penalize the owners based with graduated penalties according to the seriousness of the dog's behavior, laws that hold the owner financially responsible, enhanced enforcement of licenses and leash laws, and to take a reasonable approach. What the council, what the city attorney has prepared is overkill and not reasonable. People want to comply with laws. This is a fair city, propose fair laws.
My name's Tracy Ryman. I'm here on behalf of PETA, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals. I'm also a South Pasadena resident, spend a lot of time here in Pasadena. Last Thursday night, the need for this ordinance held special significance when I was driving my son home from soccer practice, and we found these two very scared, very thin and hungry puppy, chihuahua puppies. They had clearly been dumped by the side of the road with nothing but a cage. We were able to coax these two puppies into the cage, and we brought them home. We called the Pasadena Humane Society, who, as they always do, were there in a jiffy to scoop them up, take them back to their shelter, while they're now up for adoption and will be spayed and neutered before they go home, hopefully with a family. You've heard from many of us before, so I won't repeat everything, but know this: if you pass this ordinance, we will help spread the word about the low-cost spay-neuter program. In fact, let me ask everyone in this room who will pledge to help spread the word by canvassing and leafleting to please stand up. You have a lot of support. We will work so hard to make this ordinance and make this program work. Thank you.
I am a dog owner and a cat owner, and they are both spayed and neutered. I'm also a Pasadena homeowner, and I'm very pleased to be here with all of you at this late hour. I am here tonight as a veterinarian as well, and I'm going to speak very briefly on some of the medical benefits of spay and neuter. We could go on for a long time, but I'll keep it limited. Ladies first, first of all, with regard to spaying, that's for the females, of course, about 50% of female dogs who are not spayed do end up developing mammary cancer. That's just like breast cancer in humans. Of that 50% who develop mammary cancer, about 50% of them have a malignant form. Someone just asked me out in the hallway a little while ago if it's very hard doing my job, and it is hard telling people that their dog has metastatic mammary cancer. You can imagine the tears that start flowing at that point. I would say that those people, if they were given the opportunity to go back to a time when their dog was six months old and they could have spayed their dog, they would have said, "Yes, I would like to turn back the clock and spay my dog." With regard to male dogs, well, they do get reproductive cancers, but not nearly at the same rate as female dogs. It's much more likely that they're going to have problems when they go out and try and find a mate, which is what they do, and they don't look both ways when they cross the street. They end up getting hit by a car quite commonly. This is what I end up seeing in our trauma unit. Dogs who've been hit by cars are almost universally unneutered male dogs. So I would say that is often, you know, a situation where these dogs end up getting euthanized, either because their trauma is too severe, or because the owner cannot afford to repair the broken bones. The city of Los Angeles, of course, passed this ordinance many years ago, and it's been a tremendous success.
My name's Marie Lange. I live in South Pasadena, and I'm urging your vote to pass this ordinance.
Hi, I'm Sally Lewis. I live in Altadena. I'm a board member of the Kennel Club of Pasadena, which is the oldest kennel club in the United States west of the Mississippi. I am speaking in opposition to this ordinance for several reasons. I'll just be brief. One, I believe it's unnecessary and ineffective. Pasadena does not have a pet overpopulation problem. Pasadena's own, Humane Society's own statistics indicate very few adoptable dogs, adoptable dogs are euthanized. 87% of Pasadena's canine population is spayed and neutered. Two, the ordinance is harmful to the health of dogs. Early spay-neuter has been shown to increase the risk of certain cancers and joint disease. This takes decisions regarding the health of people's dogs out of the hands of the owners. And as far as the wandering dogs looking for a mate, there's things called fences. If you fence your dogs, they don't go wandering off.
I'm coming to speak to you as a liaison, legislative liaison to the Kennel Club of Pasadena. As Sally said, we're an old organization. We've been having dog shows in the city for over 100 years, almost as long as the Humane Society has been here. And I'd like to talk to you, my personal feelings about this, I have a lot of problems with this, with this piece, with this ordinance, but I want to speak to one specific thing, and that is about the impoundment of an unaltered dog or cat. In the spring of each year, in conjunction with the city of Pasadena, we have a Kennel Club show, and hundreds of people bring, you know, almost 1,000 dogs to Pasadena. None of them are spayed or neutered because they can't come to the show and participate if they are. I have dogs, and they are unaltered. I pay my fees, I, they're legal. And if one of them gets away, either at my house, or if a dog coming to Pasadena for a dog show gets away and gets picked up after the grace period, somebody is going to lose a very important dog for a breeding program because there was no alternative for them.
I appreciate you hearing this issue. I will be brief, and I'm hoping I am not restating the obvious. It is stated in the ordinance as written that an unaltered dog will not be released until it is spayed or neutered. That's in the wording of the ordinance as it's written today. So if a service dog, if a licensed unaltered dog in the city of Pasadena is picked up for whatever reason, it will not be released from the Humane Society until it is altered or spayed. So if you enact an ordinance to try to get licensures and to people to license their dogs, give at least some positive motivation for doing it. At this point, the way the ordinance is written, there is nothing positive about licensing an unaltered animal. There's no benefit to it. So I just ask that you write into the ordinance a benefit for licensure. Thank you.
I support the mandatory spay and neuter ordinance. I urge you to pass this ordinance, and I pledge to do my part as a resident and an alumna of Art Center, my friends, neighbors, and colleagues, to educate them about the low-cost options available, as well as the no-cost options from other mobile clinics that were mentioned previously. Thank you so much for your time.
I will keep this brief. I'm Teresa Cooper, and I support a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance, and I hope you will too. And my daughter is also an alumni of Art Center, and we'd be happy to help in any way we can.
I urge you to support the spay-neuter ordinance, and I'll do whatever I can to help advertise all of the spay and neuter options that are low-cost and no-cost. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the mayor and council and state that I support mandatory spay and neuter laws and will endeavor to make the public aware of low and no-cost spay and neuter options. Thank you.
I support the mandatory spay-neuter ordinance. I will do my part by letting people know about the low-cost options and the importance of spaying and neutering to help stop the overpopulation crisis. Please pass, please pass this ordinance tonight.
My name is Bruce Wieland, and I too pledge to volunteer to get the word out to the Pasadena residents when this ordinance is passed. I just had one other brief comment. At an earlier council meeting, there was a concern raised that this ordinance should not be passed because some people were concerned that there would be people who would simply ignore it. And I just wanted to say, that didn't really make sense to me, because that would be like not passing a law against speeding because, you know, that some drivers would still choose to exceed the speed limit. Of course, we need speed limits, just like we need this mandatory spay and neuter legislation, even if some people choose to ignore it. Please pass this ordinance and give the Pasadena Humane Society this essential tool that they need to reduce the number of unwanted animal births in the city of Pasadena.
My name is Casey Kern, and I have two adopted and neutered dogs. I strongly support the mandatory spay and neuter ordinance because it is the single most important thing we can do to spare cats and dogs from the devastating overpopulation crisis. Animals are being born faster than they can be homeed, and every animal bred exacerbates the problem of animal homelessness. I work with caring animal volunteers throughout Pasadena and the greater region. If the city needs help in getting the word out about this new ordinance, I will do my part by educating others about the health benefits of spay and neuter, and also let them know about low-cost options for spay and neuter surgery, which is the most common surgery performed on animals. Please reduce the burden on animal shelters and save lives by passing this ordinance.
I support the mandatory spay and neuter ordinance, and I would be happy to spread the word about all the low-cost spay and neuter options available and the importance of spaying and neutering to help stop the overpopulation crisis. I ask that you pass this ordinance tonight, and I do have two dogs, and they're both spayed.
My name is Gretchen Keller. I have a PhD from Caltech, and I've been a resident of Pasadena for nine years. I have three adopted cats, they are all spayed. Approximately three to four million healthy cats and dogs are put down each year in the U.S., and sometimes, big numbers are hard to grasp. So to put that in perspective, that's on the order of the entire population of Los Angeles. It's also the population of the state of Oregon, and the entire country of Panama is about 3.5 million. It's a lot. Nearly 1,000 animals were euthanized last year at the Pasadena Humane Society alone due to lack of space. This is not the great circle of life. This is not, animals in the wild. There's no natural population control for these animals. Humans have domesticated and bred the dog and cat, and I think we now bear the responsibility for preventing the associated health and safety risks to our community by having this large number of stray and feral animals. I also think that we bear the responsibility for preventing these unnecessary deaths. I strongly support this ordinance, and I thank you for your time.
I'm an AKC breeder of merit, and we do breed dogs and cats, but very rarely and very carefully. We've never had anything go into a shelter. And I'm here to speak for the wanted cats and dogs, not the unwanted. We agree, everything that we sell, if we do sell, which isn't too often, they go on a spay and neuter agreement. So with that, we're in concert with everyone. And I know there is a big problem with the Chihuahuas, et cetera, so that is a problem. But from us who show our dogs, who raise our dogs, they're, they're part of us, they're part of our family. We're animal people. That means animals first, people second. And that's most important to us. So we worry about the mandatory spay and neuter and how it could affect or hurt those of us with wanted animals that show them. So we, we oppose that part of it. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Dana Blyfer. I don't think I made it clear last time I was here that I am a veterinarian. I'm a business owner and have been practicing in Pasadena for 12 years. There are a lot of aspects to this ordinance that I personally disagree with, and I think it's not very well-written, but I would just like to talk about the health and behavior aspects as a veterinarian tonight. And I know that you've received a lot of written information from various people. I'm not sure that the city council has a copy of the Society for Theriogenology and the American College of Theriogenologists' position statement on mandatory spay and neuter of dogs and cats. So I've made a copy, 10 copies for everybody. It includes over 160 medical references, and it addresses both the health concerns and benefits of spaying and neutering. There are a number of medical articles that have been published that I think you do have. Some of the recent ones, the Golden Retriever Study, the Vishla Study, that are not in this because this was put out in 2007 or 2008 that shows the increase in certain orthopedic conditions, the increase in certain types of cancers, and certain behavior, negative behaviors that may be increased by young spaying and neutering. And what I would like everybody to think about and take into consideration is that not every dog or cat is the same, and that it should be a decision based on a number of factors. It should be a decision that the responsible pet owners can make with their veterinarian on what they feel is best for their pet and their lifestyle. And I think we all care about animals. None of us like to see dogs euthanized in shelters. We don't want there to be a stray animal population. And none of the veterinary organizations suggest that they shouldn't be spayed or neutered in a shelter environment or strays, but...
May I ask you to bring your statement to a close?
Yes. I would again just ask that you give the individuals the opportunity to make the decision that they feel is best for their pet based on their research and their dog breed or breeds, not just the purebreds that have exemptions here, but it could apply to mixed breeds as well.
Ma'am, will you bring your statement to a close?
I know you've heard all of the arguments over the last year talking about this, and I just want to urge you to support this mandatory spay-neuter ordinance and know that there's a huge community behind outreach to the public to provide low-cost and no-cost spay-neuter to make this a doable thing for all Pasadena residents and to save unwanted animals' lives. I'm here tonight as well to ask that you please, on behalf of all the millions of animals in shelters and that we've already heard about that are euthanized, pass this ordinance for mandatory spay and neuter. I'll do my part, just as you've heard from so many of us. We have a big group of people that are willing to do what it takes to educate the public and let them know what their options are to get their animals spayed and neutered. Thank you.
I'm a veterinarian. My name is Armaity Mae. I've been a practicing veterinarian in Los Angeles for over nine years. I graduated from UC Davis School of Veterinary Medicine in 2005. I am also a cat guardian, and both of my cats are spayed. I'm strongly urging you to pass this ordinance mandating spay and neuter in the city of Pasadena. Over the time I've been a veterinarian, I've witnessed innumerable cases of animals suffering and dying directly as a result of the failure of people to have their animals spayed and neutered. In particular, spaying affords many health benefits, which include for females, reduction in the risk for mammary cancer if done before the first or second heat. And many dogs will go into heat by six months of age. So if they're spayed after that point, their risk for mammary cancer may be higher than it would be if they had been spayed earlier. Also, there's a high incidence of dogs, especially male intact dogs, getting hit by cars because they burst out of the gate in search for a mate, and I've seen this time and time again. We've heard from some people citing concerns about possible health issues surrounding early-age spay-neuter. I've spayed and neutered animals as young as eight weeks. I've never observed any ill effects from early-age spay-neuter. By contrast, I've seen the devastation that the pet overpopulation crisis has wreaked on our society, and it is a moral imperative that we take this crisis seriously and that we mandate that animals in our care who are domesticated be spayed and neutered. There are already plenty of exemptions for breeders, and I ask that you make the compassionate choice in being a leader for progressive values, which include compassion for all living beings, and, and not let this tragedy of killing continue.
Ma'am, will you bring your statement to a close?
I will, and thank you for supporting the spay and neuter ordinance. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Pasadena, and I have two male rescue cats. Both are neutered. And until a few weeks ago, I had a dog who just died, but she lived 13 joyful years as a spayed rescue. I wanted to urge you to please pass this spay-neuter ordinance. Where mandatory spay-neuter ordinances have been passed, they work. And I, like so many people in this room and am at your service in delivering the information about low-cost and no-cost spay-neuter and also at the service of our wonderful Pasadena Humane Society.
Hello, council. If I were forced to choose between supporting this legislation or supporting breed-specific legislation, then I'd of course choose this. But that's forcing me to choose between one unjust item and one misguided item, this being the misguided one. I'm obviously against this legislation. I'm for the spaying and neutering of dogs and cats, but voluntarily, my dogs are all spayed and neutered. That was a choice that I made. People should have the choice and not be scrutinized or punished in this off-putting way where judgment meets departmental orders. I'm for the lifting up of communities, opening dialogue, offering resources. I'm for putting into place a mechanism where people from all financial backgrounds can access those resources. A lot of times, people want to do it voluntarily. They just don't have the funds to do it, the time away from work to do it, or the transportation to do it. With this legislation, you will have a lot of unintended consequences. Citations are oftentimes much harder to comply with, and some will lead you to believe. This passed legislation will undoubtedly result in actively honed animals being surrendered to the shelter. Another problem is that those who are actually intent on backyard breeding for profit, which represents a small fraction of any population, they'll simply just not register their dogs. That's the biggest problem, and they are likely not to care about this ordinance at all. Rather, they'll probably go out of their way to just avoid it.
So I want to talk about what is the broken system of, the broken shelter system, just like there was a broken prison system that we were speaking of earlier. The difference between Prop 47 and this ordinance is that this only brings in effect, an ineffective mandate. So it only raises more questions in regards to what the, thankfully, the Pasadena Humane Society was saying is that we're going to have a call to arms. But where are those people now? Where are, where is the mobile clinic? The Los Angeles city did pass mandatory spay and neuter, and they are, it's ineffective. They aren't able to enforce it, and there are, the people that are being targeted are low-income communities that have no resources to spay and neuter. So what is the problem? Where do we have to look? Education and, and resources. We have a shelter that's inundated, inundated with dogs and cats. So what do we need to do? I am welcoming all the PETA representatives to go out and canvass and help educate the people of where, what they can do with their pets in regards to training, in regards to spaying and neutering. But as somebody stated before, you don't need a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance in order to educate the community. What you need is these residents that are here already to go out and educate the community. I urge you to look at what is going on right now in the city animal shelters of LA with the shelter retention programs. Downtown Dog Rescue is partnering with found animals to be able to actually help people that are bringing in animals that need to be spayed or neutered or need vet costs and helping them and stopping animals from actually entering the system. So instead, go the route of actually solving the problem instead of just creating an ineffective mandate. Thank you.
My name is Alicia Wapner, and I support the mandatory spay and neuter ordinance. I have a cat who I rescued from a shelter, and she is spayed, of course. And like so many others here, I have been for years leafleting and spreading the message about the vital importance of spaying and neutering, and I would be very happy to continue to do so here in Pasadena.
I am from Los Angeles, where we have the mandatory spay-neuter law. My two cats are spayed and neutered, respectively. So it's, it's true. Not everyone in LA knows that LA has a spay and neuter ordinance, and it does, like this right here, this is a carry around in my purse. It is spay and neuter leaflets and it copies of a news article, an AP news article about when Mayor Viera goes, uh, signed into law the mandatory spay and neuter law. And while everyone may not know, when I talk to them about it, every single person I have talked to who has a new puppy or kitten has been really interested and excited to learn that LA does have this ordinance. And they initiate conversations with their veterinarians. I just have, I have a friend who just had his new pit bull puppy spayed. So sure, it's something that the community has a role in, a really, really important role. And the Pasadena Humane Society is going to be the leaders in that. And anything I can do and the rest of us can do to get that message out and photocopies for your purse, we can do that too.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for taking the time again to hear from the public on this important issue. I am a Pasadena resident, and I have two dogs and two cats, all of whom are spayed and/or neutered. And I urge you to pass tonight the mandatory spay and neuter ordinance. I pledge to educate my neighbors about low and no-cost options that will keep them in compliance with the ordinance. And I know that there is an entire army of people behind me who will pledge to do the same.
Good evening. My name is Marla Tauscher. I'm an animal attorney. I also live in Pasadena. I just want to say that, from the outset, that I am very much in favor of spay and neuter, but I don't think that a mandatory ordinance is the way to do it. On its face, it may sound politically attractive. It sounds very progressive, very proactive, but it is actually a legal minefield. I've sent you a letter back in July. I resent it today. It's about six pages, and it goes through a number of these problems, and it's problems that are based on experiences with other jurisdictions. LA City, for example, has had an ordinance since about 2006. It's been largely ineffective and unenforced. You know, it's, it's kind of ironic that we're talking now about reduction in penalties for, for crimes, yet you're trying to introduce an ordinance that would actually criminalize poverty. Do you realize what your, your penalty for, for a second infraction of this is? It's a misdemeanor. I hardly think it's appropriate to, to talk about putting somebody in jail for up to a year for failing to spay or neuter an animal. That is criminalizing poverty. Also, the thing that I really think is important here is education. If you look at, you know, there was virtually no education in the city of Pasadena. If you look at the website for Pasadena Humane, it pretty much says, we have no program here. Check back next year. That's a problem. I welcome all of this help, but where has it been up until now? It doesn't take an ordinance to bring in all this help. Where is the comprehensive spay and neuter now? Where's the mobile vehicle now? There's nothing that would have prevented these things from being in place already. And until you have those things in place, you can't put this ordinance in place. It just, you're setting people up for failure, and you're criminalizing poverty.
Good evening. My name is Marion Bradshaw. My husband and I have run the Pasadena Kennel Club Dog Show since its inception. We have a 100-year-old, 100, oh, 1898, so we're more than that. We're a 116-year-old business of Jack Bradshaw Dog Shows. We run dog shows. We're licensed by the American Kennel Club. There are 11 of us about like that in the United States doing this for the American Kennel Club. We're independent contractors, but they license us to run the shows under the auspices of their rules. We run dog shows in Arizona, Nevada, everything but one show in Southern California. So we really know what the dog people think, how they operate with their dogs. And I think the city of Pasadena needs to be very careful about implementing unfriendly dog ordinances. What happens is the dog people will choose to not attend a show that is held in a city where they have really unfriendly ordinances. They are not the problem people in a community, but they won't go to the communities where these unfriendly ordinances are. You can go on the AKC site to see the monies brought to communities. You can go to CalGov and see the money spent by the dog community all over the state. Lexington, Kentucky did a study on the decrease in participants coming to the shows in Lexington. Ventura County has just passed an ordinance, and clubs have already decided not to go there. Individual breeders will not go to communities where the ordinances are unfriendly to the dog community, which hurts your revenues.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'd say that pretty much everybody agrees that spaying and neuter is an indispensable part of managing shelter populations. I don't think there's a whole lot of disagreement with that. But making it mandatory has never been proven to contribute to that goal. Rather, it does, has the opposite effect. It's often made the situation worse. What we really need are spay-neuter clinics that are financially and logistically accessible to everyone, along with a vigorous program of trap neuter return for cats because the mandatory spay-neuter doesn't touch the, the feral cats. The vast majority of pet guardians voluntarily spay and neuter their animals. I think I've heard up to 90% of people just spay on their own, spay and neuter their animals. But many of the people who don't are lower-income people who can't afford it. And even the so-called low-cost spay-neuter clinics, such as the one offered by the Pasadena Humane Society, are still prohibitive to a lot of people. If it became mandatory, it would impose a significant financial hardship on many of these people or just simply induce them to give up their pets and thus increase the congestion and the pounds. Rather than making it mandatory, we need to make it accessible, and that means financially feasible for everyone with convenient hours and locations, short visit, short wait times for appointments, and friendly to non-English speakers. Please consider the opinions of many of the major animal welfare organizations that have carefully looked into the issue and come out in opposition to mandatory spay-neuter. And they include the ASPCA, Ally Cat Allies, the No Kill Advocacy Center, the National Canine Research Council, the American Veterinary Medical Association, as well as others.
Ma'am, may I ask you to complete your statement?
Yeah, I just wanted to urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
I'm a Pasadena homeowner. I'm a Pasadena business owner, and I run a 501(c)(3), and I'm the president. And I run the mobile clinic, so here I am. So I run a free mobile clinic. And I just want to tell you that I also work at the shelter. So I'm also the one who works in the euthanasia room, and I'm also the one that goes in the freezer. So you have to be the one, I'm the one that's aware of what's going on. I'm not home with the puppies, just selling puppies. I'm the one that's there. So I'd like to bring up a point about the $60. So I'd like to bring up a point about the $60. I just don't think that's enough. An LA city, unaltered license and annual breeder's permits is $365 for each intact dog. I want to give you an example. At one of our clinics, two gentlemen...two men, rough men, walked up with their two big dogs with those big dog chains, if you've ever seen them. And we said, "So why are you guys here?" They said, "Well, we don't want to be here." But the sheriff came to our house, which, campusing is an educational program. So they said, "We don't want to be here," but the sheriff said, "Oh, they were going to charge us $300, so of course we have to be here." And that is a successful program. When I heard that, I said, "The law is a success. That's how we won." So then we spayed and neutered those two dogs, and that stopped the cycle. They weren't going to have those dogs have puppies anymore, and we knew we won. So I'm all for mandatory. Yes, this is not for...if the breeders are doing the right things, they don't have to be shaken in their boots because they're doing the right thing. But this...we don't want the gangster breeders to be canvassed and be umbrellaed over them. We don't want the Craigslist breeders to be protected by the breeders here. So we got to just look out, and thank you very much.
I'm really against this because there are a lot of problems with it. I feel like people should be able...are and can regulate, you know, spay and neuter their animals when they need to do it. I particularly...I don't like Section 6.09.050, because it's especially the 1, 2, and 3, which just says that the cost that spay or neuter is going to increase quite a bit. It sounds like you have a great program to start out when you start out in spaying and neutering. You have all the freebies, but I think that's going to disappear after a while. And we still have...after 2015, we still have kittens and puppies born in 16, 17, and 18. So it's still going to be a problem. People are still going to need a cheaper or low-cost or no-cost spay and neuter. And I think education is the best thing. And I also am against the 6.09.060 kennel section of this, which...and also 6.04020 and 6.24.010. And AKC says that this is prohibitively expensive, and it also...it's like 1,000 feet to have a kennel. So I'm against that, too. I think that is...those two sections are the bad part of the...of your ordinance. So anyway, I think it sounds good at the beginning, but I think it's going to kind of deteriorate as it goes on. And we won't have all the free spaying and neutering after that, or not much, anyway.
I came in with quite a few ideas and questions. One of the things I wanted to know was why the Pasadena Humane Society is pushing something that they're just going to make money off of? About four or five years ago, you guys asked us for help because you had fires.
Ma'am?
We brought you a lot of equipment.
May I ask you to address the council?
You threw it out.
May I ask you to address the council with the time that is out?
Yeah, I'm really upset. I'm sorry. I've been sitting there listening to the nasty remarks behind me. These...it's really embarrassing to listen to them, and I won't repeat them. But I do have problems with this. I have problems with mandatory much of anything. I mean, look at...well, I'm reading a book right now on prohibition. That was a big mandatory thing that flopped. I'm a breeder. I'm an owner. I show in three registries. I do obedience. I do rally. I do tracking. I do earth dog. I do confirmation. I'm proud of my dogs. I've never had an unplanned litter. I've never had a dog end up in any shelter anywhere in the world. I have a dog in Scotland right now. I don't see a need for this. I've been in dogs in one way or another since I can't remember when. Got my first purebred of my own in '73. I've never had a problem, males or females. Spaying and neutering, if it's so good, then may I ask why we're not doing it to people to prevent cancer? I've lost a couple of good friends to cancer. Maybe if they'd been spayed younger, it would have helped. And in analogy, if we're hurting these rescue dogs, well, they came from somebody who bred them also. But besides that, if we're so upset about statistics that are being manipulated, if you look at the statistics, they're not correct. Find out where these dogs are coming from. Find out how many are being imported from other countries. I know that Taiwan and Mexico are very high on the list of exporting dogs to us for our rescues, because I hear them all the time.
Almost one out of every two families in this country today has a dog. That makes a pretty great demand for kennels...I mean, for puppies. And our ordinance now is going to say, "Hey, you can't have a kennel in Pasadena anymore." It's very hard to start someplace when you have to have 1,000 feet between buildings to have a kennel. In our last meeting, there were several different questions about what impact the early spay and neuter would do. I think several people have already addressed that, so I would just let it go. I've got to agree with the first speaker we had tonight, that the ordinance, as it written, is going to impact the responsible pet owners and show-beat dogs, and it's going to not have any effect on the irresponsible ones. Based on Pasadena's own numbers, the Pasadena Humane Society, there is no overpopulation of dogs. 87% of the dogs in Pasadena are already spayed or neutered. That means there's only 13% of the dogs here that could possibly be spayed or neutered because the gather's all done. I think you're shooting yourself in your foot, also. You've got two kennel clubs here: Pasadena, which is obedience, and Pasadena Kennel Club. And Pasadena used to have about 2,000 dogs every year in the spring. I think now we're down to about 100 dogs. But that means you've got to have people coming to rent rooms, come in and buy lunches and dinners, and spend money here. That's what I think needs to be done here with that part of this ordinance. Also, I think you need to do a better job of education. And if you want somebody to do it, as much as I can do it, I will be there to help you with education, but not spay and neuter.
Thank you.
Please reconsider. And take another look at Kennel Club. I mean, the Kennel Ordinance.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Lockman. I'm a resident of District 7, and wanted to urge you to support this ordinance. Similar to helmet laws, you know, sometimes we have to encourage people to be responsible because when people don't spay and neuter, then it falls the burden, the financial burden of housing these dogs and then, you know, euthanizing these dogs. It falls on Pasadena Humane Society. So financially, it makes sense, I think. The Humane Society, as well as the United States, the ASUS, the ASPCA, the American Veterinary Medical Association, all support spay and neuter for both health reasons as well as for eliminating or decreasing overpopulation. I don't think that the cost is enough. It's more expensive to breed puppies and then have to take care of the puppies than it is to pay $60 to feed a litter of puppies for a month is probably several hundred dollars. So the cost is certainly a lot less than irresponsible owners breeding dogs. Thank you so much.
My name's Annie, and I train and work with dogs and dog owners all over the Pasadena area. Though I'm absolutely for the voluntary and age-appropriate sterilization of companion animals, I firmly believe it should be a personal choice that an owner makes with his or her veterinarian, just as we are free to make a choice of when and where to adopt or purchase an animal and from whom. I think this measure is misguided because it's extreme and will be ineffective as far as population control goes. I kind of feel like it's akin to the analogy of saying that a responsible owner of an intact animal is to blame for an unwanted pet is kind of like saying that a parent of a college graduate is responsible for, you know, delinquents of that same age. I don't see how those two really go together. I'm also really concerned about the proposed section stating that in order to get impounded animals back, regardless if an appropriate intact license exists, that that dog would still have to be sterilized prior to receiving the animal back once that grace period runs out. Yeah, I just...I don't understand that. It doesn't make sense to me. I would say that instead of creating a new ordinance that targets a group of people that responsibly enjoy a hobby that isn't harmful and definitely not illegal, maybe we could consider using existing nuisance and noise ordinances to kind of contain those same issues, such as roaming or noise or barking.
My name is Nancy Riordan. I'm a resident of the city of Pasadena, and I have three dogs, one of which is spayed, two of which are not. I am a breeder. I do not have a 1,000-foot setback, so I guess if this ordinance passes, I wouldn't be able to breed dogs any longer. I don't think anybody in Pasadena has a 1,000-foot setback to their home, which would enable them to breed under this ordinance. Regarding what Mrs. Bradshaw said and others regarding the Kennel Club of Pasadena Dog Show, yes, you will lose revenue if people don't bring their dogs here, but there's another issue that you need to be aware of, and that is that a responsible breeder of a golden retriever or a boxer, a cocker spaniel, whatever kind of breed residents of Pasadena might want to own, they won't be able to get because a responsible breeder will not place a puppy in a home when that puppy is going to be subjected to juvenile spay and neuter. Most breeders agree that juvenile spay and neuter is not healthy. If it's a pet-quality puppy, they may have a spay-neuter component to their contract, but it is not necessarily going to be at six months. And if they have a show-quality puppy, there's no way they'll place it in Pasadena, given the draconian consequences of a one-time escape. Your dog gets out one time, and that dog is automatically spayed or neutered after the grace period. So I would encourage you to think of your constituents who may want to own a purebred dog and who will not be able to. And then the only other thing...
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Yes. Thank you. That I would like to point out is that for all the talk of overpopulation and crowded shelters and euthanasia, why is it that we are still importing 300,000 puppies a year into this country? Those figures come from the Centers for Disease Control. So if my friends from PETA want to do something about pet overpopulation, perhaps they should work toward keeping puppies out of the United States, which are currently being imported for the purpose of populating shelters to provide quote-unquote "rescue opportunities."
Thank you. Minister Trup, Unitarian Universalist Church, a few blocks from here. And I'm here to support this ordinance. A cat claimed me, Kika, and a few days after she claimed me, I did indeed spay her. So Councilman Tornick, never fear, that did indeed happen. And one of the values of my religious community is the flourishing of all life and honoring the inherent worth and dignity of all beings on this planet. And so because of that, I am here on behalf of my religious community, hoping that you all will vote to support this ban. So thank you all so much to support this spay-and-neuter ordinance.
And I think that the basic question here is, what is our relationship with animals? Are they a source of use and profit-driven place in the system? Or do we have a relationship that recognizes our role as stewards of this planet and stewards of the animal world as well? If animals rely on humans as their stewards, we know that unfortunately not all people are as committed to the well-being of those animals as many...I would say, really, everyone in this room is people really care about animals. But at the same time, good law, good regulation, good standardization, which we see all over in other municipalities as well, Las Vegas, Dallas, Los Angeles, good law is important to ensure a functional society. And in this case, the animals are depending on these laws for their well-being. And I believe a mandatory spay-neuter is part of...it's the step in the right direction to recognize our stewardship of the planet as well.
Aside from what I think, I found a couple items that I think are important. One is from a veterinarian who lives in Pasadena, practices in South Pasadena. You have your letter forwarded to you, and it says, "I am writing as both a Pasadena resident and longtime veterinarian in this area. I am writing to give my full support for the mandatory spay-and-neuter initiative. There is no doubt in my 12 years as a veterinarian that the benefits of spay-neuter for our canine feline population absolutely outweighs any overhyped issues associated with lower hormone levels. At our 24-hour animal emergency hospital, I have seen countless animals with problems associated with not spay and neutering, hit by cars searching for mates and other diseases he talks about. Pasadena is a city of forward-thinking legislation, and here's an opportunity to stay forward." I just want to conclude with one point. It's been said that the requirement for spay and neutering is unfair to the poor who can't afford the procedure. According to this editorial in the Pasadena Star News, "This is sheer nonsense. Voluntary groups subsidize spay and neutering. Caring for a dog requires an investment in it. Pasadena should pass an ordinance requiring all dogs be spayed and neutered for both public safety and to reduce overpopulation. An owner should take responsibility to train and restrain their dogs." Thank you.
I'm definitely for spay and neuter. However, I do oppose the way this was written specifically. I spent 10 years working at Humane Society as an adoption counselor, ambulance driver, euthanizer technician, and I'm very well aware of the need for spay and neuter. However, I do have two cats that are strictly endorsed in both spayed and neutered, and I do have a working water collie at home that is a competition dog, a service dog, and a detection dog. So I'm under the look at...if someone is doing that much with their animal, they're going to be very responsible with it 99.999% of the time. So if I come to Pasadena for an event and God forbid I'm in a car accident or something weird happens, and my animal is taken, and then under this ordinance, you're looking at after the three-year grace period. It's the way that it's all written. I feel like, yes, spay and neuter is good, but under mandatory and the way this was written, I don't believe it's going to serve the public in the greater good.
Mayor, I think I was the moving member last July when we asked that staff bring back this report, and I think the case is pretty compelling that this is the right thing to do. I would just note that the genesis of this whole discussion related to pit bulls and the dangers that they presented. Coincidentally, just a couple of days ago, there was a sentencing in court of the owner of four pit bulls who killed a woman up in Lancaster. And in reading the coverage of that sentencing, and the sentence was like 15 years to life for this individual, one of the comments was made that a lot of dogs are taken to that high desert area and just released because they're unwanted, and that some observers felt that that environment contributed to the situation that resulted in that sort of tragedy all the way around. So no doubt in my mind, this is the right thing to do. It's the humane thing to do, and it'll help the Humane Society hopefully get out of the business of putting unwanted animals down and controlling this problem for our community at large. So I'm enthusiastic about it. Thanks staff for the work. This has been a couple of years in the making, and I do appreciate the work that's gone into it, both by our staff and the Humane Society. So I would move the item.
Been seconded by Ms. McAusten. Mr. Tornick?
Mayor, thank you. I continue to oppose this ordinance. Some of the commentary tonight, I appreciate everyone who showed... Um, the, some of the commentary tonight, I appreciate everyone who showed up and feel so passionately about this. Um, I think that the opposition can be summarized briefly in some of the correspondence we received that said that, um, uh, that the proposed ordinance will bring responsible pet owners under ownerless draconian law because of the actions of people who flaunt the law and have no concern for animals and their care. Uh, I am supportive of, of spaying and neutering. I, I have a rescue animal that is, that is, uh, neutered. But I think that, um, when we pass legislation that I think is, uh, aggressive or intrusive, I don't know what the characterization is, like the smoking ordinance, the multifamily smoking ordinance, or the plastic bag ordinance, we have to be really clear that the problem that we're trying to solve will be, will be in fact solved by the ordinance. So in the case of the multifamily smoking ordinance, we had unarguable evidence, I think, from, from the Public Health Department that the, um, that secondhand smoke was impacting people who lived in multifamily units. And the plastic bag ordinance, we had, again, unarguable evidence that, uh, it was clogging streams and roadways and was a significant portion of our waste stream, et cetera, et cetera. And, and the state finally came along and agreed with that. But here, unlike what, I think his name was Mr. Walkman, I'm not, he's a, one of my constituents, I should get it right, but I, I wasn't sure that I got his name right, where he referenced the helmet laws, um, with, you know, making the parallel here where, where there's a clear, clear evidence of injury reduction, et cetera. Here, what we're talking about is, is not whether or not spaying and neutering is a good idea, because that's unarguable, but whether or not we should pass a mandatory ordinance imposing it on everyone. And contrary to what Mr. Walkman said, the ASPCA and the vets don't, don't support it. They support spaying and neutering. But the ASPCA, and this is some of the material that we got from various people, um, does not support, uh, mandatory ordinances because, in their words, "The ASPCA is not aware of any credible evidence demonstrating a statistically significant enhancement in the reduction of shelter intake or euthanasia as the result of the implementation of a mandatory spay-neuter law." And goes on to say that claims based on one or two years of data can be misleading, and that the mandatory laws may have a negative impact on other issues, for example, um, people licensing their dogs, et cetera. So I don't wanna revisit all that 'cause, 'cause we've been through that. But I think that we have, unlike those, uh, other ordinances that I referenced, the plastic bag ordinance and the, uh, smoking ordinance, I don't think that we have a clear nexus, um, between a mandatory ordinance, mandatory spay-neuter, and the desired effect. Not my, not my expertise, 'cause I don't have any, but in terms of the research that's been brought to my attention. In terms of spaying and neutering and all these, um, representations from people in the audience tonight that, that they're willing to promote, um, a low-cost option, and, I mean, there isn't any reason to wait. I mean, I, I, where have they been? I mean, I, I think that, that that is a, a, something that should certainly be underway, and I urge people to undertake. Um, the, I think what we're gonna do is have, is have, is not achieve the well-intentioned purpose that has been articulated here. I think in our anxiety to try to do something to address a problem, we're gonna do the wrong thing, uh, that we will have unanticipated consequences that we don't like, and that we are intruding in, in, in the relationship between people and their pets in a way that, that is not justified. And so I, I continue to not object to spaying and neutering, but I do object to this proposed ordinance.
I do support the, um, the ordinance, but I have a question. Um, one of the speakers said something about breeders needing a thousand, a thousand-foot setback in order to be a breeder. Is that, is that what I, did I hear right?
Yes, correct. That's what the law says.
Okay, I.
The code currently provides that, the proposed ordinance does not address that. The code currently provides a thousand-foot, uh, setback for kennels, which are five dogs or greater, and a three-hundred-foot separation for breeders, which would be fewer than five dogs.
I see.
But that's, that's not part of the ordinance that's being considered tonight. That's a current law.
My question.
Thank, thank you very much, Jane. Other comments?
Mayor.
Mr. Kennedy?
No matter what our vote is, I think you're exercising democracy, and, um, I'm impressed by the passion that all of the speakers have demonstrated tonight. And the fact that, um, you feel so passionately about this issue that you would stay at this late hour to make sure that your voice is heard, that's our democratic process at work. I am not convinced that this ordinance has it right. I believe that there are going to be unintended consequences related to this ordinance if it passed, and I'm hoping that it does not as it's currently drafted. I think spay and neutering is, um, an effective way to deal with some of the issues that have been addressed tonight. I just don't believe it should be mandatory. Um, one of the possible unintended consequences is that it may have a draconian impact on those who cannot afford even under the, can't afford the, uh, cost, even under the, um, quickly fashioned remedy at the podium that will have some sliding scale, if you will. Uh, those, although that was not the terminology used from the podium, uh, so forgive me if I've mischaracterized, uh, the statements. It is late. But there'll be those who cannot afford, um, to, um, pay for the spay or the neutering, and for some, particularly our seniors, and, uh, those who are economically challenged. It could be the, on the one hand, do I eat on that day, or do I use the money that I'm subsidized already, um, to spay or neuter my animal? Um, so I will not be supporting the ordinance, and I really say this sincerely, I appreciate all of the comments on, if you will, both sides of the issue. I think many of the speakers have been, uh, articulate and right on point in their belief.
I did, I just had one question I wanted to clarify about the, the, the transportation issue, uh, because some, there are some, uh, a lot of times people, lower-income people, you know, don't, you can't take a dog on a bus, you know, it's difficult to transport your dog. Did you say you, you have a mobile clinic, or you will have a mobile clinic?
And in the past, we have had mobile clinics come into Pasadena for low cost and subsidized spay and neuter.
Okay, so you partner up with them and have programs from time to time?
Yes.
So that it is available, you don't have to find transportation down to the Humane Society?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Who should we contact to have the mobile clinic, or, or field reps contact to have the mobile clinic come to community centers or, or, um, different parks and parts of the city?
We will put together a list for, um, the council members, so you can have the, the clinics arranged to come into the neighborhoods. So we will provide that, um, we'll put together a list of the various, um, services that are available from both us and other nonprofits, that you can then decide who you'd like to arrange.
And the costs associated with the mobile clinics, are they, do they vary?
It varies, and some of them are fully subsidized that they have, um, because they are nonprofits, they have the donations in order to bring them into the community.
Um, I too am going to continue to, um, oppose the, um, current ordinance, ordinance as currently written. Um, I do think that it is well-intentioned, however, I also believe that it will disproportionately affect, um, people that can't afford the, um, either the surgery or the, um, permit. Um, in the past, I have held, um, with success, uh, a spay-neuter clinic with downtown dog rescue. I think that's an opportunity available for all of the council members. They're not, they're not the only organization, um, that do it. All of you, uh, since, I know some of the speakers spoke to the fact that they believe that, you know, all responsible dog owners do wanna spay and neuter their pets, and I think that was evident by the event that I held. All of the slots filled up very quickly. There was a waiting list, and, again, I just think that even without the ordinance, the education and outreach can continue to go on as it has, and hopefully even more so since we've had all of these discussions. And so, um, for those reasons, I'm gonna be opposing the ordinance.
I intend to, to support it. We've spent a lot of time considering the issues of, and certainly we've been benefited by the thoughtful and, and, and careful comments that we've received in this evening and on several previous occasions. But I think on balance, I think this ordinance will have benefits for the community, for the, uh, overpopulation of, of animals, and, uh, I think it should, it should be put into Mr. Madison, I trust you wish to be seen as introducing this ordinance?
Please.
Mr. Jobski?
Councilmember Gordo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
No.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember McAusten?
Yes.
Councilmember Tornick?
No.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
No.
Mayor Bogard?
Yes.
The motion is approved, five in favor, three against.